We'll go and get started. Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District, number 13, school board meeting for Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting in order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again and welcome. We need a roll call.
Mueller?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Samurai?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Okay, thanks Laura. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be an approval of the agenda, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Start with the agenda. If I get a motion, move that forward, please.
I'm moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty? Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that motion carries. Next up would be announcements. On May 21st at 5:00 PM, there'll be a school board listening session in the family center. On May 21st at 5:30 PM, be a school board work session. May 27th, which is a Monday, there's no school, it's Memorial Day. On May 28th, which is a Tuesday, at 5:30 PM, there'll be an ad hoc subcommittee on community engagement in the training room. Also on May 28th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next up would be correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence tonight?
Mr. Chair and members, there are no, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be communication to the board, citizen, employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration to follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Okay, nobody there for that. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, and then minutes of the April 9th and 23rd school board meetings and the April 16th school board work session. Start with a motion, move that forward, please.
I'm moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Ms. Haller?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that motion carries. Next up would be discussion, reports and information items. Board members will report on activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lorian?
Oh, sure.
You don't mind?
Yep. It's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting. We had a subcommittee on community engagement. I also attended the career celebration, high school conferences, the high school band concert, synchronized swimming meet and sections for figures, middle school and varsity baseball games, a city council meeting, the high school musical, and the prom grand march. So, it's been a busy couple of weeks.
Did you get that done?
Natty?
Also had a busy week, maybe not quite that busy, a couple of weeks. Along with Lorian and Hall, I attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement. I've been to many baseball and softball games. Also went to the prom grand march, which is fun. We need to work on centering kids between the two pillars, though. I don't know if there was poor instruction there, or if they're just not great at centering yet, but otherwise they looked fabulous. It was really fun. Went to the career celebration and the community prayer breakfast hosted by the city.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I also attended the career celebration. Congratulations to all the staff and their service with us all these years. It's always a good time, bittersweet, but it's always nice to get together like that. I also attended the musical. Kids did absolutely an outstanding job. That was a lot of fun. I attended the Subcommittee on Policy and the band concert, and again, you know, kids just do a really wonderful job.
Okay, thank you. Haller?
I had conversations with a number of community members and conversations with Superintendent Kelly, and attended the opening night of the Beauty and the Beast musical. Attended the Subcommittee meeting on community engagement and the conferences at the high school.
Good, thank you. Molly?
Yes, unfortunately I missed the last meeting, so a couple of things before that. I attended the academic awards night at Columbia Academy, which was really nicely done. Also attended a work session and some varsity track meets, as everyone else did, the high school musical, which was great. Attended the career celebration. Good luck to all of those moving on from our district. And also the Columbia Academy Choir Concert, and just before this was the Subcommittee on Policy. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Glad you guys went first. I got to write all my down. In no particular order, I also attended the prom grand march. I was at the career celebration. That's always a fun event. Wishing people well on moving forward. The musical, I attended a couple times. The band concert, the kids, again, continue to do an amazing job. Not that the play wasn't, they did a great job, too. But the prayer breakfast, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the first part of the powwow on Saturday. Got a chance to see our senior, graduating senior receive his feather from the group that was there. That was really cool as well. And then a chair meeting prior to this.
I was there also. And I forgot to mention, I was at the, I was at History Day, so I got to see some of the kids at History Day down at the University of Minnesota, the middle schoolers, so that was pretty fun. Very excited.
Cool. All right, next up would be the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair and members, the North Park and the high school construction oversight committees continue to meet on a weekly basis to make progress. You'll see some of the bids again on upcoming agendas and one tonight. I had coffee and conversations with both the city of Columbia Heights city manager and the Columbia Heights Chief of Police on separate occasions. It was nice to touch base with them. I attended the Columbia Heights Public Schools Career Celebration, and congratulations to the retirees, but also special thanks to all of the people that work on the Career Celebration Committee, because it really takes a village to get that going, and it goes on year after year, so thank you for that. I attended the AMSD Board of Directors meeting, and they were really focused on legislative funding targets, and they, as you know already, there's a big disparity between the Senate and the House and the governor, and we're not quite sure if we'll even have something done by the end of session, but hopefully there's a few more days left. Everyone was encouraged to contact, if they felt so, their local legislators to, and talk about the importance of education. It's been just fine arts and fabulousness around here, so I, too, attended the Columbia Heights production at the high school, Beauty and the Beast. It was amazing. And then I had an opportunity to go to the high school band concert, the Columbia Academy Choir Concert, the North Park Band and Choir Concert, and the prom graduation march, and the grand march, and then they were all spectacular and unique in their own ways. And I can tell you, last night when I was walking over for the choir concert, it was like, I thought it was starting at 6:30, and it really started at 6:15, and I walked out of here, and it sounded like little angels were singing, because it was the girls choir, which just made you go in. So it's just been, it was a great way to end the day. Saturday, we had the big American Indian powwow, and that really went from 1:00 to 4:00. And I just want to, that has grown every year. We had the graduating senior who did receive the eagle feather, and then there was more dancing than I've ever seen at the powwow before. The drumming was really spectacular, and then they had a feast at the end, where everybody was eating and playing games and getting together. And I want to thank the American Indian Parent Group that puts this on, and a special hats off to Zena Stendvik, who has grown it over the years to what it is today. It really was a great afternoon. In addition to that, I attended the school board Subcommittee on Policy, the chair meeting, and I had contacts with multiple members of the school board over the course of the weeks. Thanks to everyone for their time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the 2020-2021 Pathway Two Award.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm pleased to be here this evening to provide information about funding that we are continuing to receive that support our families involved with our early childhood programs. Pathways Two is one of the scholarship awards that our district and our families benefit from, and for fiscal year 2020, so next year and the following year, for each of those two years, we will be awarded $193,351.51, and that's for each of the next two years. And what we do with this is, we have families that fill out the applications so that we can award them specific to the family. And the families that participate in this are families that utilize Mini Adventures Child Care Program, that's here at the family center, also our Pre-K3 program, which is a fee-based program. And then for our Pre-K4 program, you remember that that is a free program, but the funding that we receive through the voluntary Pre-K funding stream doesn't cover the full cost of full day. So those families that are enrolled in our full day program are able to apply for us to award this money to help supplement that full day program. So I'm very pleased that we are continuing to receive this Pathways Two funding stream. It does enable many of our families to utilize our programs, and tonight there are no governance questions, it's simply an information sharing. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
That's a good comment.
Yeah, I think we all agree.
Anybody else? That's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd just like to acknowledge that our early childhood manager Tiffany Grams-Farkas works very closely with our staff and our families on awarding that, so thank you to her. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, next up will be the climate survey. I think we have a host of people coming up, so.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here this evening with Principal DeWitt, Principal Sasek, Principal Burkus, and Principal Robleski to review the school climate survey. Principal Fellows was unable to attend this evening due to illness, so we will, I will provide that information at a different time. So of course, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And the core values tonight will focus on our community, excellence, and collaboration. This won't be a governance, I will not come back for governance at a future meeting. This is an informational presentation. So each year, we use the National School Climate Center survey to monitor the school climates of each of our schools. So as you can see, we're really looking at positive school climates to directly impact the success for each of our students. We know all of the benefits of a positive school climate, so this is a very comprehensive school climate survey. One of our goals this year was to increase participation, and in most of the categories, we increased dramatically the participation, and that's something we're going to continue to work on each year to improve. Just as an example of kind of the plan of how we were going to send out the survey and get people, students, parents, and staff to participate. This started in January. We did actually have to extend it a little bit, if anyone can remember all those cold and snowy days that we had, so we were able to extend it. So as I mentioned, this is an extensive survey. There are several different categories, as you can see. The bigger categories, safety, interpersonal relationships, social media, teaching and learning, institutional environment, and then there's a section just for staff on leadership and professional relationships. One thing that we've found, and this is similar across the nation in talking with the national folks at the School Climate Survey Foundation, that across the nation, they're seeing that the social media category and the social emotional category are the bottom two categories, the bottom two scoring categories across the nation, and I think you'll see that reflected here as well. So we always, our coordinator, Desa Fabek, and I, when we talk with them about the results, we always ask, you know, why is this happening, and what's going on? They say, well, that's a normal amount, or that's what happens, or that's what we're seeing across the nation. The next few slides that the principals will go over for each of their buildings, I just wanted to give you the scale or the key. A very dark blue is showing a negative range. The middle color blue is showing a neutral range, and then the lighter blue is the positive range, as we go through the scale. So we're going to start with Principal Burkus and Columbia Academy.
Well, thank you. So I think there's a lot to look at, and you can see that the three broad categories of students, school personnel, and parents, we do have in this slide here, all of the same different components that are part of the survey. You can see that there is some similarity of what is showing up at certain broad areas, but it does differ across the three in terms of what is receiving the highest ranking and in the middle. As Director Stendvik said, though, if you look at the bottom, we are seeing, again, that that social media and sense of social emotional security is showing up there, and something, again, that it's in some ways comforting to hear that that's true across the country, but obviously an area that then we must continue to work in as a school. I think that the, what do we do with this? We look for things like that. What are the areas that we really want to continue to focus on? That sense of belonging, the sense that our school is safe and predictable. I think another thing that we want to look at is just, how are we different in our different groups? What does school personnel rank higher than students, and what would that mean to us? And what do parents see as well? So lots for us to dig into. We got this back, and we'll be looking at it with our full staff and using it to plan for the next school year as we continue to see climate as sort of a foundation. Two, are we able to get kids to focus in and learn? We need a good, solid, positive climate for that to happen. Oh, sorry, we do have more. So this is another way to look at it. And again, comparing it from one year to the next, as you can see, very, very similar scores, and all the way across, we do have some that are neutral, mostly positive. And again, another way for us to look, we are happy to see that sense of social emotional security go up among our school personnel, so that we don't have any in the negative this school year. But again, interesting for us to see that there is some consensus on physical security and social emotional security, but then really across many of them, there is a consensus of how we are scoring.
All right, so let's move to Principal Robleski and the high school.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening. Just a couple of things to point out at the high school. Our ninth grade class comes in, takes a survey after approximately six months into the high school. And this year, it is the largest class of ninth graders that we have seen in some time, at least for the last decade. We have not seen the number of ninth graders coming in. One thing to point out, as you see the first two slides, in the staff and students, the rank order of the top three, if you look at them, they're the same top three, but just in a little bit different order. So that is unique, that we're looking at, that they see the safety and rule norms as number one in both students and staff. And we think that's attributed to our real expectations when it comes to behavior, and we're excited to see that they're ranking at high. Also, if you look at, in all three categories, everybody has respect for diversity, which is exciting for us to see in our school district. And then for parents, if you want to look at the parents, number two was support for learning. Again, thank you to the school board for all the programming that we have at the high school. We have a number of programs, and worlds of opportunity is for sure happening across our district. And then again, connectedness and engagement for the parents. An area that we want to focus on, as Principal Burkus brought up, is that sense of social emotional security, sense of physical security, and at the end, if you look at that social media piece, that across the nation, but also at the high school, with the ninth graders especially, when we look at incidences with this, it's probably our highest category amongst ninth graders. As you continue to grow up and go up in grades, it drops, but in ninth and 10th and even 11th grade, it's probably one of our higher concerns. A lot of that social media stuff that's brought into the school happens outside of school, and it impacts in the school. So the social media piece, as we've looked across the board, is the digital citizenship that we work on. We will continue to focus on that as we see this as a concern. And then again, you can see that there's consistency in 2019 and 2018 with those categories across the board, as we add parents as well, so.
All right, so we will turn to Principal Sasek and North Park.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening. Overall, I'm pretty pleased with the results that I see from the North Park Climate Survey. I'd say I'd see eight out of 11 of our student scaled scores were in the positive range, seven out of 11 for staff, and nine out of 11 for parents. A couple of things that I want to, would like to point out is, I was really happy to see that for students, social support and support for learning were the top two. It's also gratifying to see with our school personnel that social support for adults was the highest ranked area. And I think that's consistent with a building culture that is very positive, and I think it's a well-functioning building. Looking, there is very little change between 2018 and 2019 in our student results. However, one thing that I would like to point out, or a couple of things, one is our parents are beginning to understand that social media can have negative impact, because they were, social media was a positive result in 2018, whereas it's neutral now. So I think that the parents are starting to see, their parents are becoming more, their students are becoming more active with social media, and it doesn't always have a positive effect. Also, noticing school personnel, two years in a row, the physical surroundings are in the neutral area. I'm thinking in a couple of years that that'll probably be a teal. Thank you to the school board and everyone in the district for helping to get that referendum passed. But overall, I think that there is a lot to be happy about. However, just like everywhere across the nation, we really need to be focused on social emotional security of our students.
All right, and moving to Principal DeWitt with Highland Elementary.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Highland is also very consistent with the other schools in Columbia Heights. We, I guess the most surprising for me when I first saw the results was respect for diversity across the board. Like, the high school fell in our top three, so we were very excited about that. And again, similar to the high school, the strong student response to school, or safety rules and norms. And again, when Dan and I happened to be sitting side by side when we first got our packet of information, and we were comparing the two schools, and it was really interesting, our results, looking side by side, were almost identical. So we had strengths in the same area, and consistently, the areas where all of us were talking social media in a sense of social emotional security were the greatest areas of need at Highland, and I think the elementaries across the board. And so those are areas where we'll be working, looking at how we can provide support to students and families to improve in that area. Highland as well had very consistent results between 2018 and 2019, with an overall majority with a sense of positive. The same areas that were neutral, but working more toward positive results in the three areas that were neutral. And again, we also had very similar results to the other buildings, as far as our response that we received from parents. We'll take a look at, we had one area of sense of physical security that changed from a positive to a neutral, so that's something that we'll certainly want to dig into there as well. But overall, we're very pleased with the positive results that we received.
So in general, what are, from the parent perspective, what are parents saying? As you've heard, categories for growth, social media, sense of social emotional security, physical security, and social and civic learning. And then categories for celebration, respect for diversity, safety rules and norms, connectedness and engagement, and support for learning across the district. So as mentioned, the data is shared with the school staff, and this is one of the data points used to make goals for the staff around not only academics, but also that social emotional sense of security. So again, this is an informational update for the school board, if there are any questions.
Actually, I have specifically the question about the social and civic learning. Could you define how that category was, I guess you could say, surveyed?
Yep, so there are extensive numbers of questions. I think it's over 50 questions for the kids to answer, and in your school board packet, I will include the list of all of the questions for you.
Okay, thanks.
Is the social media stuff surrounding how the kids are impacted by social media, not how like the school is doing social media itself? That's kind of the social media, that's what I'm getting? Okay.
Exactly. It's a lot about, you know, how they're feeling around social media.
Okay, got it.
So you see the actual results of the survey, the answers, and, or at least general overviews of things like that?
Yes. Each school, I think the full packet is close to 200 pages. So like I said, it's an extensive battery of questions.
Right, but then the result piece you see as well. So when you talk about the social emotional, you've got at least some information to work with for things to work forward to try and make those corrections. The physical surroundings, you know, Jeff, I certainly understand at North Park, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, security of buildings and things like that, but I saw consistently in each of the buildings. Just in general, what are the surveys telling you? What is it, I mean, my first thought was, is there's, you know, school shootings left and right, are the kids just always worried about that? And that raises theirs and their parents', you know, awareness or concern for safety? Were they specific about buildings, or, just curious what the overview on that was?
One thing we noticed last year, when the survey was taken, it was taken in the month of February, after there was a significant school shooting in the nation, and we did definitely see a downward trend that way. So I think that that is something that's on kids' minds. Did you want to add?
Yeah, and I think also that the physical surroundings questions, I think, have more to do with the shape the building is in and things like that. And the physical security one, that's a slightly different, it's a different question being asked. And I think the physical safety surrounding one was more of a positive response from teachers and staff and students.
Okay. And again, you're getting the information you need to be able to make adjustments unnecessary, but the security one, you know, if the kids aren't feeling safe, so if they're saying, Dan, you know, making stuff up, you know, whatever is the reason I don't feel safe in the buildings, we're getting that information, so adjustments can be made. And that was, I guess, what I was really driving at is...
And I'll just reiterate that there weren't any in the negative category for safety and security. They were all either positive or neutral. So there weren't any in that very dark blue band. So we're not hearing overwhelmingly that kids aren't feeling safe. We're feeling, they were hearing either neutral or positive.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks for taking the time to do this. It's a lot of work.
Thank you. All right, have a good night. Next up would be the out of state and overnight field trips. Looks like Zina?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Each spring, I work with the schools to determine and propose any field trips for the next school year that may be, or for the upcoming school years, that may be either out of state or overnight. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And the core values for this presentation focus on excellence, courage, and innovation. This evening, I'm going to talk about two high school-based field trips, so there will be governance question at our next school board, or at an upcoming school board meeting. board meeting to approve overnight and out of state field trips for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, which will include preparations for the New York Study Seminar in terms of beginning to fundraise one year in advance. So I'm going to speak very briefly about the New York City Study Seminar because we have, uh, upcoming presentation with the, where they will go more in-depth. Um, but the purpose is to provide multifaceted field trip experiences to students as an extension of the high school curriculum. Uh, the students visit colleges, have professional experiences that, including clinics that you can see here. This is a professor at NYU and he not only toured the students at NYU, but he came back and gave them, uh, clinic, um, and really went to each of the different sections within the band and honed in their skills. Um, the students experience a great deal of collaboration, camaraderie, critical thinking and creativity. Um, and then they're also have the, they also have the opportunity to perform and see professional performances. So of course, there's a lot of research around hands-on field experiences for students. Here you can see the students on the steps of the Columbia University Library. And then research around supporting the arts in terms of, um, academic achievement and preparing students for the twenty-first century. Um, here you can see the students in their professional attire performing. Um, several years ago, the board approved a schedule for the New York Study Seminar. So you can see, um, or we've just completed kind of the middle area of that with the twenty nineteen trip, um, for the art, AP art students and the band. So next year will be an off year for fundraising and then we'll continue that. So, um, probably around twenty twenty, I will come back and propose a, an additional, an extension of the schedule, but for now, this is what the board has approved. Um, there was a tremendous amount of fundraising efforts that took place this school year. Um, so from donations from local businesses, sales, uh, an exceptional turnout by the Booster Club, an exceptional effort by the Booster Club to raise quite a substantial amount of funding, um, concessions, local restaurants and students out bagging groceries along with other fundraising opportunities. Um, so again, the, the next presentation will go, have a deeper dive for you on the New York City Seminar. The second, um, field trip, this was our first year doing it, doing this field trip and we're really excited to partner with North Hennepin Community College, um, for the Dave Larson Memorial Tour. I included this photo because this is, this is from the trip this April and you can see Valerie Larson, our American Indian Specialist Staff Person, in front of an image of her husband, Dave Larson, who passed, um, a couple of years ago. Um, and this is at, um, they found this image at, um, Mankato, um, as part of the tour. So it was pretty exciting for them. Um, so this field trip is part of our American Indian Education Program, um, a qualifying, so far we've had one, if there are one or two qualifying Columbia Heights High School students have the opportunity, um, to participate. And as I mentioned, it's a partnership through North Hennepin Community College. Um, by the way, North Hennepin Community College staff people came to the powwow this weekend to support the graduating senior as well. It was exciting. Um, this field trip includes four college credits for the qualifying students, so that's exciting as well. Um, it's a substantial fee that the American Indian Parent Committee has approved to use the funds that the school district generates, um, part of the funds to, to cover the costs of this tour. Uh, next school year, it will take, the tour will take place in the spring of twenty twenty. The committee will determine the exact dates throughout the school year. Just briefly, what the tour entailed this year, um, traveling all throughout the southern portion of Minnesota, visiting different indigenous sites and reservations. The, in the image here that you see on the screen is part of Jeffers Petra Cliffs, which is, um, ancient rock, um, carvings in the, that mirror, it's, it's on Dakota land, that mirror, um, some of the constellations in the sky. Um, but you can see, uh, trip to the Buffalo Restoration Project, the Bedote Site, Pipe Stone, Minnesota, um, and just a lot of, a lot of experiences and hard work for the students. Here you can see, um, part of the Mankato State University work that they did there. Um, so the specific topics, um, will be determined next year by the committee. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, the, our Columbia Heights Public Schools Parent Committee supports this field trip. So again, I will be back at the May twenty eighth school board meeting seeking approval of the overnight, overnight and out of state field trips, um, which will include, um, the go-ahead to begin fundraising for the New York Study Seminar.
Any questions? Okay?
Let's get to the kids, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Next up would be the New York City Study Seminar follow-up. Another host of people coming on up. Host of Highlanders, thank you.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Tonight we have an entourage here. That'd be great, thank you. To summarize their experience that they had in New York, um, and I, I, I'm not gonna further do, I just want you guys to go ahead, um, introduce yourselves and, um, we'll go down the table and introduce ourselves and then we'll go into the, our experiences that we had in New York.
Sure. Caitlin Storm, good evening, high school band teacher.
Kristin Stunkel with the Communications Department.
Samantha Alexon, band student.
Alex Mueller, band student.
Lily Dixon, AP art student.
Dylan Nichols, uh, TV Media and Broadcasting Student.
Hannah Stark, uh, arts teacher, visual arts teacher.
Uh, all right, you guys, good evening. Uh, thanks for having us here. Uh, as the, uh, as the band teacher, I would want to point out just two things in particular. Um, first, as a new teacher to the district, I wanna point out how immediately apparent it was to me, um, that this trip was planned with the intention of being, um, both academically and artistically rewarding. Um, and my experience in teaching in other districts is that's not always the case. Uh, so just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone is aware that that was very apparent to me very quickly on my arrival here in Heights. Um, and then from the teaching perspective, um, the professional connections that were established for us with our professors that led the clinics has already been, uh, beneficial to me as a teacher. Uh, I know I can send an email to those professors and I will hear back immediately with some feedback or some thoughts, uh, from, you know, people who are very well-educated, um, on how to help our band improve.
Um, Dan asked me to go next. So hello, I wanted to highlight three major things that I took away from this trip as a teacher. I think anytime you can give someone a submersive learning experience, that heightens the experience that they have. And, uh, there's a difference between looking at a photo of a painting and standing in front of a painting. And to show a kid Vincent Van Gogh's Starry Night, then to bring that same student in front of Vincent, Vincent Van Gogh's Starry Night, they, it makes them emotional because they realize just how much work, how much effort, how much thought went into that piece. And so that submersive experience is unique and is, is so rewarding for both the teacher and the student. Uh, one thing that I had the opportunity to do with students is wake up really early and go on walks with them. And, uh, we developed a relationship and began to have conversations around art-making, around experiences, around what makes a good artist. And we had them in the context of buildings and murals and, um, other artists even on the street. And that was, was fulfilling as well and that, I, it was, uh, a bridge that I wouldn't have had inside a classroom, so. And then finally, when we think about the arts, we often talk about arts as, um, educating the whole person. And, uh, this experience, this trip, as Caitlin was discussing, was theater, it was visual, it was music, it was all of the arts together and, uh, that is, interarts is the, is the move of the future. That is what, uh, arts education as a state is looking at. The state of Minnesota has put forth new standards and they're talking about how can we integrate arts together, interarts. So we're ahead of the game. This New York trip is, is leading the charge for the state as a whole, which Heights has been doing already through so many different efforts in art education. So thank you.
So I think right now we'll be able to show our video real quick. Mr. Nick. Video.
So what is the meaning of this New York trip to you?
Well, Dylan, the meaning of this New York trip, um, is probably twofold, personal and professional. Uh, the personal part of it is, uh, growing up, uh, myself, I never got to a place like New York City. And, um, growing up on the east side of St. Paul, it was like, I wanted to, um, to see the things beyond this, beyond Minnesota. And so as I got to be a teacher, I thought we should expose our students to all kinds of experiences of which this is a culminating activity. The mission of our district is we provide worlds of opportunity for every learner and, um, all succeed. And so we're hoping that for the very serious-minded seminar student, that they will come out here and do just exactly that, expand their universe, um, and expand their universe, see colleges, see arts, see culture, see entertainment, that may lead them in a direction they may not even known that they were interested in, or bring some of it back to, um, to the city of Columbia Heights, to their families, to their friends and ultimately to their careers.
I thought it's a great opportunity to work with someone who has a lot of time spent in the field of study. Being able to, to listen to someone who knows what they're saying, but also to have been experienced and know firsthand that what he's saying means something is a, is a good opportunity.
Um, so I think that the purpose of this trip was to gain new experiences from, uh, like the professors from different universities. I think we got to learn a lot about, um, how to become better musicians overall as a class and like how to listen to each other. We learned many new things on how to improve in playing our instruments. Um, I also think it was a, an amazing opportunity to learn about the different cultures, um, different, like, uh, the history of New York and how it became the, the city it is today. Um, I know for some people it was their first time going to New York. For me, I've been there before, but I, I was still able to learn a lot of new things. So I think that's, that was the purpose of this trip.
Well, I hope that personally they take one thing back that's a really great memory, that they say, I remember when I did that with that group of people in that time. Um, on an academic level, I hope that they bring back things that will further either their art in this case or their musicality with the instrumental and they'll be able to apply it back in the school district, that they'll be able to mentor other students, um, have them share their experiences so other kids might wanna come out and then ultimately set them further on the path of being ready for college and career.
Throughout this study seminar, Columbia Heights High School had some excellent learning opportunities such as band clinics with professional conductors, tours through museums and interesting parts of New York City, the opportunity to capture and create art that encompasses the city, the possibility to present the product of their hard work and the chance to see professional theatrical and musical performances.
Dylan, you put that together? That, you put, you put that together?
Yeah.
Very nice job.
Very nice.
Thank you. Um, so I followed the, so I followed the students, um, uh, on this New York trip for, uh, the first day I followed everyone, cause it was a group. Uh, then I followed the art for two days and the band for two days and, uh, took video pictures, put this all together, um, got some interviews from people, asked them like what they thought, what they thought the New York trip was for, um, and, uh, that's what I got. Thank you.
Do you remember the conversation we had, Dylan?
Oh, yeah.
Before you went on this trip? Dylan is, for the record, came up to me one day and he asked, he says, what do you think about, you know, somebody doing exactly what he did? And I said, I think that sounds cool, but you better ask the superintendent first, but, and it obviously, conversations took place that you were able to go and it wasn't just, didn't end up being just a free trip to New York. You obviously worked really hard to put together, um, a really nice piece there and I'm sure you learned a lot as well, so. Good for you for stepping up and asking.
Thank you.
Well, um, hi. We wanted to share some of our experiences as students on the New York trip. One of the biggest things that stood out to me was going to the nine eleven memorial and museum. Immediately after getting off the bus, one of the first things we saw in New York was this museum. And as someone who was alive but not old enough to remember any of it, I've grown up hearing stories, but like it just doesn't ever feel real until you see it for yourself. And so that really helped me understand a better part of the, our, that city's history, our nation's history. And then another thing that really stood out to me was our opportunity to tour the Lincoln Center where the New York Philharmonic performs. And later in the evening, we actually got to see one of their performances, which was super cool because that level of music is so different than what we see through college performances and even our own performances. To just see that next level up was really inspiring.
So I don't think I've ever stole my own thunder before, but in the interview, I talked about the clinic and I would also like to talk about that here with how, as soon as you step in, you're not a student, you're a professional in his eyes. And that's really cool because you can see just how he treats everyone else that he works with and you're not, you're not there to just learn, you're there to improve on what you learn. And I thought that was really cool. And on one of the clinics that I went to, we also got to talk to the people from the VH1 Save the Music Foundation. And so they pulled me and a couple of other students aside and we talked about how long we've been playing, what this has done for us because starting in fifth grade, I, I've continued to play since a senior and now it's, it's crazy to think that just one small step at the beginning of, of middle school or end of elementary school has changed my life entirely as a student. And finally, I'd like to talk about the performance of Dear Evan Hansen and how it was emotionally draining just to watch. Being connected to each of the characters and each of the, the stories that they went through was amazing to see. And I also got to look at it from a technical point of view, watching as a technician myself, seeing how the sound effects and, and the music was played and just how smooth everything felt was just amazing.
Um, pull that closer. Okay. So, yeah, I'm Lily again. Uh, I went with the AP art kids. I had the opportunity to go with band and then I also had the opportunity to go with art and then I ultimately chose art. And, um, honestly, it was a life-changing experience. I've been going through my entire high school career, being very focused on STEM, being very focused on science and math and only viewing art as like this secondary thing, this thing that, I, yeah, I like it, but I could never truly pursue it because I'm not good enough. And I went on this trip and there were so many tours at all these wonderful museums and so many people who were just passionate about learning, not just who worked there, but who also came with us and being in that community of passionate educators but also learners, because as an educator, you're all sways learning as well. It was just amazing and I've honestly been looking into pursuing an art history minor when I go to college, which is something that I honestly would never have said even three months ago. So it's pretty amazing for me. Um, another thing that was truly just crazy, well, not necessarily crazy, just was so helpful. When I went on these things, I had so many questions and before I could even ask the questions, Ms. Stark over here was giving the answers and it was absolutely phenomenal. I'd be like, yes, I'd be like, ah, and she'd be like, oh, so this and this and this and this. And I'm like, it's just the level of academia that went behind this art-making that went into how we create art, how we view art as a society, why certain movements were created. Like seeing the Starry Night, I teared up because that's been my favorite painting for so long. And I go in there and I see the exact same techniques that I use every day in my paintings, my art-making and I was just, it was amazing. I'm shaking right now because I just, I loved it so much. And, uh, it was just truly a life-changing experience that, I mean, as a high schooler, you go into this and you say, I'm gonna go there and I'm just here to have fun. There's not gonna be any sort of subtle thing. I know it's a school trip, but they're not actually gonna get us to learn anything and I, and I, I say that with absolute love in my heart, but then you come out and I've just changed, not, I don't wanna say changed as a person, that's a little cliche, but like my, I- but like, my idea of how art is in our society, and how we react to it, and how we view it, and what makes art, especially in the context of like, so many content creators nowadays, with so many different medias, so many different ideas, this idea of what is art, where does art come from, and how do we relate to it today versus a different time? It's just cra- it's crazy to me. And then, the final thing I would like to say, we got to tour the Met Cloisters. And in there, we went into this kinda dark room with the creaky floors, and we saw these unicorn tapestries. And we had an hour by ourselves at the end, just to go back around in the museum. And I think I spent the whole hour at that room. It's the level of detail, the amount of intricacy, the fact that they don't even know why these pieces of art were created, because there was no written record of it. It would cost more to make one of those tapestries than to build an entire castle. And there were five or, four or five of them in the room by itself. And it covered walls, it's just, the skill of art you don't expect from old peo- old people.
Careful.
That's not what I mean, and you know it. But I mean, from people in history, you think of like Renaissance, you think of medieval ages, and you think of people who are sick and dying from the black plague, and they're not having time to sit around making art. And they've got this art that works on the level of religion, level of color, level of metaphor, and just, the way it tells the story. And it wasn't even just Christianity. We went and we saw artifacts from Islam. We went and saw artifacts from Buddhism, and it was just all these different cultures, all these different religions, and how they played together, and how they were influenced by their own cloistered, ha, 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 because it's the cloisters' culture. And how they were then influenced by, you know, our more globalization, and I'll stop talking now.
I can only follow this up with gratitude, with such deep gratitude, for the students who shared their time with us, and their inquiry, their intelligence, their spunk, their initiative, for all of the chaperones, some of whom are up here, but also for Ms. Gillis, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Henderson. I think that all of the adults really worked together beautifully to support the students' experience. Also, Ms. Hoyam, for all of the behind-the-scenes work that she did to enable it. To Ms. Mueller, and all of the band boosters, who worked so hard to financially and familiarly support this project. It was a shared experience that none of us will ever forget. And such deep gratitude for the vision of the superintendent, and for the support of the school board to enable such a phenomenal trip like this. Principal Roblaski.
A lot of times, a lot of times, people will, outside of Columbia Heights, ask the question, and in life, we ask the question, "Why?" Why do we do what we do? And I can only say, this is the why. This is, you just heard the why. Questions, comments?
Anybody have any questions or comments? I think you stated it correctly, Dan, as people were talking, except for Lily's comment about old people. It was just, it was, I'm sure I was sitting here with a smile on my face, but I'm even watching people in the crowd and the people here, just seeing that you got the opportunity, and you guys got a really good opportunity too. This is one of the many reasons that we do what we do, is to be able to talk about and hear stories like this. So, I'm really, really happy that you guys got to do that.
Lily, you should know you drew tears from the back row. I'm not saying who, but...
Maybe the board table too.
Maybe the board table too. Just before you guys run away.
I have one more thing. As a point of personal privilege, I want to thank each and every one of you that are here tonight, and those that aren't, because to me, this trip, Dan's been in it with Dawn and I from the very beginning, planning it, and it rolls around quicker than you think. And, in my heart, it's one of the best things I do in my job and in my life. And I want to thank you all, because it really is, whether it's Dylan who says insistently to Dawn Hoyam, "I have a super- I have an idea the superintendent's gonna be very interested in, and I must see her." And leaves that into a pilot. To the art students, who always teach me more about art than I knew when I got on the bus the year before. To the instrumental, the instrumental musicians that played on the Intrepid in a freezing cold wind. And if you look at the videotape, it looks like it was eighty and pleasant, it wasn't. And they were ultimate professionals, and it just gave me chills that we were actually playing on that. And I swear, some of you could be in the New York Philharmonic. And so, although you may not want that as a career, I'm glad you have that as an experience. It's wonderful to hear that you're thinking about things beyond what you did before you hit the city. And I will be forever grateful to all of you for making this possible, and especially the school board. Because it is not all boards that let the high school principal, the superintendent, staff, and kids on a two-year basis take that much time off of school to do in-depth seminars. So, thanks to each and every one of you. And then I will pass the baton back to you.
Okay. I have several more things, but does anybody else have any questions or comments to the group? I just want to just build a little bit on something Xena talked about earlier. There was a lot of effort that went into the fundraising, and this is not an inexpensive trip. And the kids worked really hard, and I obviously would encourage that as soon as the board approves the ability to start fundraising, that you do that. You talked about boosters, and I think I wanted to separate, because I know the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters are extremely generous, but we also had our Columbia Heights Music Boosters, who were, I mean, pretty darn bossy sometimes about getting people out to do bingo and stuff like that. But, very instrumental in helping to make sure that the funds were there so that the kids could go no matter what. And that's always been a philosophy of our district, is no matter what. So, and the music boosters, there was tons of people that helped. But tonight, I want to take a second to recognize our Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters, and I'm gonna call out the president of the boosters. So, this is a certificate that says, "An appreciation and recognition of the ongoing support for the New York City Study Seminar 2019, and arts and education throughout the district." Because it wasn't, the music boosters is not, wasn't just about that New York trip. There's so many other things that they do for our kids, and so many things behind the scenes. So, take a brief moment to do a shout-out, and yes, you gotta come up and get a picture, so. She definitely deserves an honor.
Before everybody at the panel leaves, you did a wonderful job tonight. Thank you so much for regaling us, and a special thanks again to Dylan for the first creation of a pilot, which I think will be moving forward for the next trip, so thank you.
Dylan, I think you could parlay that into a business career right there, then.
Go do some homework or something. All right. Next up, we're gonna be giving a transportation update. And, Arlen and Denise, I think?
Good evening, Chair.
No way transportation can follow that.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the Board Superintendent Kelly. Arlen, Viding, and I are here to provide a transportation update. It is only informational, we will not be asking for any governance questions from this. So, it's just to tell you the state of transportation right now. This is our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And we're going for excellence with this presentation. Arlen is, Arlen Viding is from K-12 Transportation Services, and he acts as our Director of Transportation for the school district. So, Arlen put together the numbers of this, and I put the dollar signs on the end. So, Arlen's gonna talk about this now.
Chair Larkin, members of the Board Superintendent Kelly, thank you again for the opportunity to come and talk about transportation. Maybe just a little bit of, called a transportation update, just want to update you on a couple of things before we get into the slides here. As we approach the end of the year, sometimes we think it's a quieter kind of a ramp-down time. In transportation, it's actually a ramp-up time, and even more so with some of the things that are going on with our district going into next year. Certainly, our work with our new service provider, Monarch School Bus, is well underway and making good progress. We are beginning to work on our preparation for summer school transportation, and even now at this time, doing preparations for routing for the next school year. So, those activities are ongoing and taking much of our attention. One of the, was brought to our department to try to answer a question around, can we provide additional transportation services to some students in our districts, and specifically, students that are in our walk boundaries? So, as I kind of unpack information around that question, wanted to just give you a little bit of an overview of our current transportation system. And again, tonight, this is pretty specifically focused on our regular ed student transportation. Our current system is a two-tiered system. As you're well aware, our elementaries have an earlier bell time. Our Columbia Academy and in the high school have a later bell time. In transportation, we call that a tiered system. We operate our buses on a first tier to bring our elementary students in, and then go out and run a second tier to bring our secondary students. Our whole system utilizes 27 vehicles. On our elementary system, we actually use 22 buses. Our buses are loaded to a, an average capacity of 51 students. That 72 and 36 are the high and the low end of our routing on our routes. The variables we work with in transportation are runtime and capacity. So, buses that we can route to 72 students are largely our routes that are in a higher student density area, largely in our in-district routes. We can load the bus quickly and be on our way to school. Those routes that are towards that lower, that 36 number, those are our routes that are operating in the larger Minneapolis area of our school district, where we provide transportation. So, we have less density, we have to drive more miles to get from student to student, so. Secondary, we use 20 buses of those total number of vehicles on the road. Again, we're routing to an average of 52 students with those kind of high and low end of routed students. Our, one of the points to point out that we've accomplished this year, partially by some routing strategies that we were able to implement, but largely by an elimination of a transfer process that occurred at the elementary level going into this school year, which really came at request of staff in the elementaries. We were able to eliminate that, do some different routing, and ultimately, we're able to reduce our average ride times by about 10 minutes per route. So, a good accomplishment for, in our department in that regard this year. The question that was brought to us is, what would be the impact if we, to our system, if we were to provide transportation to our students that are currently in walk areas around our buildings, that we currently aren't providing transportation to? So, a quick review of what our current parameters are. At the elementary level, our walking distance for our students for 1 through 5 is .7 miles, .75 miles, three-quarters of a mile. We do transport all kindergartners in our current system. At the secondary level, we have our 6th through 12th grade students walking 1.25 miles to school. We do have exceptions to those parameters, and those exceptions are really hazardous conditions, whether it's road conditions or those types of things that we've made exception to, and those have developed over time in our system. So, we're gonna, we've looked at it from kind of two different levels, and this is in line with, I believe, a look at this perhaps a couple, three years ago. We're gonna look at it from the standpoint, if we were to reduce those walking distances by a quarter mile for each level, for the elementary and the secondary, what would be the required buses, what would be the impact on our system? So, going through building by building, elementary, this change would require two additional buses to transport 90 additional students. No impact at North Park. North Park really doesn't have a substantial walk boundary. So, any students that would be in that small walk boundary would be fitting on existing buses for service to that building. Valley View Elementary, again, two buses for 93 students. At the secondary level, two buses for each building. Again, 67 students at Columbia Academy, 66 students at the high school. As we put the two tiers together, then, the total impact for a quarter-mile change in our current walk boundaries would be an additional four buses needed in our busing system to accommodate that capacity, roughly $218,000 annually. The second look at this is, what would it look like if we made the decision to transport all of those walkers to school? Again, I'll walk quickly through the numbers here. 104 students at Highland, additional two buses. 118 students at Valley View, an additional two buses. Columbia Academy, 255 students would be in that group of students, requiring five additional buses. The high school, 219 students, for a total of four buses. Again, putting the two tiers together, this would be an impact of nine additional buses to our system, just shy of a half a million dollars. The, just to put this again in a little larger perspective, districts, as you know, the state requires us to transport students beyond two miles. In reality, most school districts set parameters, just like Columbia Heights has, that are well below that. Largely, there are not, I can't say that there aren't any districts, but most districts do have some level of walk boundaries around schools where it's appropriate, where there aren't safety issues. So, to consider, to consider, for example, a full-scale transportation of all of our students isn't something that districts typically would put into place. I know that's a real quick run-through numbers. Certainly would be open to answering any questions around this, or any other activities that we're, we're working on. So, again, the summary here, decreasing walk areas by a quarter mile would result in four bus, additional bus routes at 218,000, a full-time equivalent of three FTEs. Transporting all students would be a nine-bus add to our current system, with a $490,000 estimated cost and seven FTEs.
Any questions or comments at this point?
I have a question. First, thank you for putting this together. I appreciate getting this information. And I know that we had a, you know, somebody who came in. And I know that we had a, you know, somebody who came in and spoke to the board a while ago regarding kind of our bus boundaries. So I think it's important for us to follow up on some of that. You know, and I, you know, I look at, you know, obviously, we have, we're, we've got, you know, a limited number of funds to be able to use, so it's an appropriate night for us to talk about that. Have we looked at other creative ways in terms of busing and maybe what the cost or implications would be? Instead of just, you know, decreasing a walk boundary and busing all kids, have we looked into like opt-in options or, you know, paid a bus if you live outside walk boundaries? And, I mean, I'm assuming that our buses that we're sending out, that are coming back, they're, are they full? Is there room on them? You know, if we stopped along the way and picked up some opt-in kids, would that, is that an option?
That is a part of what we do kind of on a day-to-day basis and what the department has done on a year-to-year basis. There are aspects that we can look at. Some of the variables that, in transportation, we like to look at, but we're often not given the freedom or the authority to make decisions are bell times. So for example, some of those buses that were listed as 30, you know, 40 passengers routed, the actual riding count is probably a percentage of that, so that if there was additional runtime, we could, we could really utilize the capacity. It's really a balance, not to pull too much into the weeds of transportation, but it's a balance of our ability to run the bus around and fill it up and then the actual capacity. So we have some routes that are full, for example, at the high school level, 55 students, but we're only running them 17 minutes. Well, their runtime doesn't help us. But runtime could help us in some of those other sparser areas. And that's really, that's really a kind of a bell time decision and, you know, maybe that's some, that's something to follow up with on some studies of what could be considered that would have an impact on transportation.
Right, I guess, because I would be interested in, you know, learning more about what are some of the creative options that we may have based on, you know, what are, you know, within our current bound, you know, financial constraints or, you know, if we're adding maybe one bus or, you know, like I said, again, being creative and trying to find a solution that works for many of our families. You know, I look at the 1.25 mile walk boundary now, as a family, we're just on the end of that. So my kids get a bus, but the kids who share our backyard don't. And there's not, you know, not a sidewalk between my house and the high school. So, you know, kind of looking at what some of those areas are, could those families have an opt-in? You know, they live a half a block from the bus stop that my kids get on, is their bus full? And that I don't know, I don't get on the bus with my kids, so I don't know if their bus is full. But, you know, and I know that we have to be prepared for the kids who should be getting a bus, one day they all might be on the bus and another day, half of them are on the bus. I understand that. But if we look at average busing, creative solutions within our current system, within our current budget restrictions, to provide an option, I just, I think to me, it's the option. You know, can we do something strategically if, if maybe not having a bus for your student is a, means that my student's going to go here in Heights or my student's not because of busing or I'm comfortable with, you know, the transportation of getting my student to and from school versus not, that it's something for us to continue to explore?
Appreciate those comments. And I think, coming back into transportation with those thoughts about what else can we explore, I think we can do some examination and some discussion with administration on some other things. I don't know, having been here a relatively short time, I don't know that fee for service busing has been explored in the district. It's a pretty deep discussion and there's a lot of variables and factors involved in...
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's the answer, I just think that, kind of looking at options. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Next up would be the North Park roof bids.
Good evening Chair Larkin, members of the Board Superintendent Kelly. This evening Denise and I are here to talk about North Park roof and bids that we've received for that. Earlier this year, we talked about capital projects that we had in mind, we presented to the school board. One of them was a section of North Park's roof that has a lot of patches in it and continues to leak that we needed to address through long-term facilities. And on April 9th, we came to the school board and asked for approval to go out for bid and we have done that and we have the bid results. So on April 25th, well, first I should say, our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, with our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation. So now on to the bids. So, just so I have it up here as well. So we received sealed bids on April 25th for North Park roof. The really good news is that we had a mandatory meeting and we had nine companies show up to that mandatory meeting. And typically, when you have that many, depending on when the season is, you'd be lucky to get 50% of them to put in a bid. And we had six that did, so that was fantastic. So we were, we felt good about the numbers. And then, based on the timing of, we were kind of late in the game in getting these bids in, so we were a little concerned that people were going to be busy. So luckily though, the size of our project really fit into some of the work that they were already doing this summer and so that enabled us to get some, some good numbers. So we have, we worked with the Garland Company, I have it up on the screen now, and we have a recommendation letter to move forward with a low bid of, for the base bid for North Park Elementary, we broke it into two sections. Again, because we did that because we were concerned about just the total cost and we really needed to address the one section that was leaking very badly. Based how things came in and working with Denise in finance, I think we feel very good about where we're at with these dollars. So for the one section of $204,900 and the other section of $209,000. And just to give you a perspective on the building, those that you know the building, it's the section above the fifth grade studio, the, in the current larger kindergarten rooms, that area, so the south area of the building. So that's, that's our problem area. Also, the area where we have our solar panels. And fortunate that in, because we think, okay, so we have lots of solar panels on the roof, it's going to be very expensive to move them. We have a three-year contract with those solar panels and there's a, somebody did a good job on that contract because, I can't take credit for it. Because we have a flat dollar amount for if we needed to move them, if we needed to repair the roof. So it's a very, very good number for us. So that's not, that's going to be very low cost for us. It's not included in this, but it's, it's low. So we feel very good about that. So this is just an information item on where we're at with the bid totals and recommendation to move forward with Burwell Roofing for that contract. And then, of course, we have the overall bid results for all of the companies. And we'll be bringing this back to the May 28th board meeting for approval. And so we can get going right away in June, because we want to start on this roof as soon as possible as the school year is out. And doing the first section, we'll do the second section in July, so that we make sure that we have this completed before the school year starts. Any question on that? Again, this is just an information item tonight and we'll bring it back for action at the next board meeting.
Questions?
I just have a comment. I actually remember that discussion when we got the solar panels on there, because we've been talking about having to do so much work over at North Park. So I remember, I remember that question is like, well, if we have to move them to fix the roof, how much is this going to cost us? And so that was, that was pretty good that we got that in there.
Yeah. It was, it was a surprise, it was a very good surprise.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks. One of our action items, first up is Northeast Metro 916 Service Agreement.
All right, good evening Chair Larkin, members of the Board Superintendent Kelly. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to come back as an action item. At the April 23rd school board meeting, I had the opportunity to present some information on intermediate District 916 and the programming and related services that they provide to our students across a continuum of settings, both here in Columbia Heights as well as their setting for programs throughout the metro area here. So I'm here this evening to see board approval on an agreement for intermediate 916 to continue to provide special education and related services and staffing to students enrolled in Columbia Heights for the 19, 20, 20, 19, 20, 20 school year.
Start with the motion and move that forward.
Oh, moved.
Laura?
Second.
Paula? Discussion, questions? This is something we do every year, correct?
Yes. We've moved it up from August to May.
Anybody else? All right, motion on table to sign the agreement, all is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Next up is pre-K curriculum recommendation for 2019, 2020.
Good evening Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm here with Tiffany Graham Sparkitz, our early childhood manager. And after those amazing students, I turned to her and said, we should have brought pre-K kids. What are we thinking? On April 23rd, we presented to the board information on the process and outcomes of the pre-K curriculum analysis we had and teaching and learning staff collaborated with early childhood and to analyze our current curriculum and look at other curricula that could possibly better suit our students' needs. And the staff unanimously agreed that the creative curriculum was the best fit for our students. So we're back tonight recommending the adoption of the creative curriculum for our pre-K programs.
Start with the motion and move that forward, please.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Molly? Questions, comments, discussion? Harry Nun, all is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up would be the discontinuance, the reduction of positions for 2019, 2020. This is a resolution.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we're here, back in February, the school board did direct administration, the superintendent started looking at efficiencies. So we have been busy meeting and looking at our staffing. The first resolution tonight is here to seek approval of the discontinuance of positions that are listed on this resolution.
All right, start with the motion and move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Sorry, Laura. This is a resolution, I'll read it and then open it up for discussion. That's a resolution discontinuing and reducing positions due to enrollment and department efficiencies, whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 adopted a resolution on February 12th, 2019, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, as follows, the following positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curriculum changes or departmental efficiencies. 8.5036 FTE net licenses in non-licensed elementary positions. 1.4437 FTE net ECSE licensed and non-licensed positions. All teacher positions with Tier 1 licensure or out-of-field permission licensure, by law, they need to renew. All teacher positions that were one-year contract long-term substitute positions and all positions cut for performance. Motioned and seconded, so conversation, discussion, questions?
I have a couple of questions. Can you just talk with us briefly a little bit about the methodology and kind of how we, you know, just the process that you use to come up with some of these positions?
Well, the first thing is, we always, you know, take staff in mind, we try to keep as many staff in the family as possible. And we try to look across the board to see, you know, where we can, you know, put different funding to help save positions and programs. This year, we didn't, we're not cutting any programs. So that's always good news as part of the staffing process. And we also do try to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible, that's probably one of our biggest goals.
So based on, on these reductions, a student who is returning from, you know, last year or this current year, coming to school next year, will that student notice anything different in their education or classroom experience based on these reductions?
They shouldn't. Most of the, across the board, most of the classroom teachers, we stayed in pretty much at the same sections. There might have been a little tweak here or there. Instead of maybe having a four or five split, it might just be a fourth grade. But we really do not, in my opinion, cut too many classroom teachers.
So this is more, like you said, I mean, it's for, it's due to enrollment, it's moving some things around, but there's, there's not program changes or if they, you know, like I know we talked last year, if they had art this year, they're going to have art next year. So there's no changes in that respect.
Correct, and Director Stenavich can probably talk more about it, but we were able to get some funding, so we have some literacy through the arts, we are able to keep at some of our elementary schools, the specialists that are tied to prep, keep them whole. Where in the past, we've had maybe a .5 here and a .5 at another school. And this year, with that funding, we're able to keep, so at North Park, we'll be able to keep full-time art, art, music and PE.
And I would just add to that, that I think we've discussed at the other board meeting that we haven't received Title IV ever before. And when it came in through the federal programs this year, it really was for well-rounded education and it really stressed things in the arts. And so that really gave us a chance to revive a program that we used to pay for through Title V and that had been eliminated. So not only can we enhance the arts, but we can enhance literacy through the arts. And our teachers are familiar with that already and will be reworking on curriculum on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Here you go for a discussion, this is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call for Laura.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up would be termination of probationary teacher contracts, and this is also a resolution.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Part of the annual staffing process also is to look at a resolution where we have to terminate and not renew probationary teacher contracts. This would include teachers that might be on a long-term substitute position, so they're filling in for a year-long leave. It can also include teachers cut for performance. We have one or two that were on a special licensure that we, by every year, we have to non-renew them with the hopes of getting their licensure and having them back for the start of the school year. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the termination of the non-probationary teacher contracts.
A motion to move that forward, then I'll read the resolution.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Molly? Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers, whereas the persons listed below probationary teachers of the Independent School District 13, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of those persons listed, on this resolution, probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of the current 2018, 2019 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law. And that said notice shall be substantially in the following form, notice of termination to Mr. and Mrs., you're hereby notified that at a regular school board meeting, from Independent School District 13, hit on the May 14th, 2019, a resolution was adopted to terminate your contract effective at the end of the school year and not to renew your contract for 2019, 2020 school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5. Comments, questions, discussion?
I have a question on this one too. Just to verify, so this is what I'll call more of like a housekeeping item for some respects is that the teachers who have the probation, that are probationaries, I mean, they know kind of coming into it that that contract's not going to be renewed, is that correct?
Well, probationary teachers, depending on if they are tenured in another district or not, they'd come in with a three-year probationary period of, say, you're fresh out of college. And so during those three years, you can be non-renewed at the end of the school year. Like I said, some of these people on here are long-term subs, so they fill in for a year. And since they just signed a one-year contract with us, we have to non-renew them. And then some, we hope to bring back in the fall. But they've all been spoken to and they should understand that their contract is non-renewed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing further, roll call, vote Laura, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
The Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up would be the termination of positions.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. The third staffing resolution that we bring forward is the termination, elimination, reduction of certain positions. These would be the non-probationary teachers, so non-affiliated staff, that we do have to have their, sorry, employment agreement non-renewed for the next school year.
Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Thank you. I'll read the resolution. Resolution relating to the termination, elimination, and reduction of positions, whereas the list stated below, or employees in Independent School District 13, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that those persons or positions listed in Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated, eliminated, or reduced at the close of the current 2018-2019 school year on the date otherwise noted. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said employees regarding termination, elimination, or reduction. Questions, comments, discussion?
I have one more question. So, regarding these positions, again, can you just talk a little bit about the philosophy in, in kinda making these changes?
Yep. So, when we look at where we're going to make efficiencies and reductions, we don't just look right at classroom teachers, we look across the board. Some of the positions listed here, one is specifically tied to a grant that we don't, we reapplied for, so if we get the grant back, we'd bring, reinstate the positions. The other ones, we did look at administrative positions and looking at how many students are in the building and the admin support we need, and making cuts across the board and trying to, like, again, keep the cuts away from the classroom.
And that's something you did in analysis, even looking at kind of neighboring school districts and looking at the ratios of admin staff to students and whatnot.
Yes. We did that during principal negotiations, looking at surrounding districts, number of students in buildings, number of principals, assistant principals, deans, and support staff, and we were very well-staffed, so that was a place where we could make a reduction and not take on a classroom teacher.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, roll call, vote, please, Laura.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
The Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up would be board topics. I have a couple things, does anybody else have anything for board topics?
Academic awards night, that's tomorrow night.
There goes one of my things.
Hey. At the high school at 7:30, 7 o'clock.
Yep. And I don't know if this makes the air before that, if people see it, but it's a, an amazing event to watch, the amount of money that comes from our local businesses and the communities and things like that, in the form of scholarships, is always really fun to watch.
I think the middle school band concert, right? That's next Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, also.
6:15.
6:15.
That's 6:15.
And then Silverwood Expressions, the following Thursday?
23rd and 24th.
Yeah.
22nd, 23rd.
22nd and 23rd, I was so close.
Wednesday, Thursday.
I'll say Thursday. It's always a good time.
Lots of arts on Thursday nights for the next couple weeks.
Because there's a high school choir concert on the 30th, so we'll just keep the next three going, next three Thursdays.
Anybody else for board topic?
I would definitely recommend everybody take a look at our calendar and see what great stuff is happening pretty much every night between now and graduation, and of course, graduation.
Yep. That's a very busy time of the year. I would just ask to, like, like to ask the other board members to check your emails, the link for the evaluation, our self-evaluation.
I already did mine.
Huh?
I already did mine.
I still didn't hear, I'm sorry.
I did mine already.
Okay, good for you. It's to complete it, May 21st, so sometime between now and then, if you would, please. And that's all I have for board topics. Anybody else? Hearing nothing further, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:38.